Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our March 10 City Council meeting. Before I begin, I know there's a lot of people in the audience, so I'd like to remind everybody to silence their phones, please, if you have an order. So roll call, please.
Brewster?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Benner?
Here.
Barton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
The invocation will be given by Kurt Hansen from Hayesville Christian Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, my apologies. I have to pray and run tonight. I'm supposed to teach a class at seven. To make up for it, I come bearing gifts. Permission to approach the bench, sir?
You may approach.
And would you join me in the singing? Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday to you. Yes, your wife made the cupcake, and you can take that back.
That's much more.
It's been a couple of days, but yeah, start the celebration early. Permission to pray now, sir.
You may pray.
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for celebrations. We thank you for this day. We were reminded just this past weekend as we sprung forward, as we moved our clocks ahead an hour, actually how little control we have of time. So you remind us that we should number our days, treat each one special because it is a gift. David would say, this is a day the Lord has made. I will rejoice and be glad in it. It's always our choice. We thank you today. We can just stop and give you thanks for sunshine, for this community, for this city. We ask your blessing upon our mayor. Thank you for blessing him with another year, and each of us with another day. Lord, we do understand and remember that time is limited for each of us. That's why you've said eternity in our hearts, and you offer us life. So, Father, tonight, even at this meeting, may we not just focus on ourselves, but one another, the needs of our community, and we thank you for this place that we call home, and we continue to grow into just a more unified, loving family and community. I ask your blessing of all the councilmen here today, Lord. We thank you for them, department heads. Again, we thank you for this city. We ask your blessing upon it in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, we have a presentation and approval of minutes. Eight minutes of February 10, 2025. That's first, the pardon.
Make a motion to approve this presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from February 10, 2025. Any discussion or questions? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Upstain.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Upstain.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have item one, public comment. Like, we do have a couple of people that signed up to speak, and now there's others that would also probably like to speak. I would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Angie will be holding up a sign once you get to your one-minute mark. So first up, we have Rachel. Welcome. Yannis. Make sure I pronounce it.
You got it. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, staff, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak. I'm here to invite anyone that is interested to an informational coffee this Wednesday at Schinkel Mortuary from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30, where we'll discuss the bond for the 261 School District. All residents of the 261 School District are welcome to attend. We've recently held a couple of these meetings last week and threw out with members of the community where there's been some real open and some great dialogue, where questions have been answered. The superintendent has been very transparent about what the bond covers and isn't afraid to bring people in and see the school and see what the needs are. As a business owner in the community without children currently in the district, I wanted to be involved for three reasons. One, my gr- my gratitude, my deep gratitude for the educators who helped my children succeed. And second, my appreciation for the Hayesville community and how supportive it's been. And third, my desire to ensure that every young person in this district has access to quality education and a well-maintained environment. Because not only will it benefit them in the immediate, but it benefits our community. It gives them a vision for a better future for themselves, and it just is, it all around is beneficial to us all. I just want to thank you all for giving me a chance to share that and why I believe this bond is important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, too. All right, next, we have Marky Jonas from WAMPO. I saw Nick in the audience as well. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As Mayor Kessler said, my name is Marky Jonas, and I am from the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm with my colleague, Nick Flanders, as well. And we are here to talk to you about the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or WAMPO, and our long-range metropolitan transportation plan, MTP 2050. Some background on WAMPO. WAMPO is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Wichita Metropolitan Region, and MPOs are federally required regional policy bodies in urbanized areas with populations over 50,000. We are responsible for carrying out the transportation planning process in 22 cities and three counties in south-central Kansas, and that includes all of Cedric County and then portions of Butler and Sumner Counties. That, of course, includes Hayesville, and Mayor Kessler has been a great contributor these past few years. We're also here to announce that we are in the final stages of the planning process for the federally required long-range metropolitan transportation plan, or MTP, and this is called MTP 2050 because ours is looking forward to the future 25 years to the year 2050. The goal of this plan is to set priorities for transportation improvements throughout the region, including safety, reliable travel times, managing environmental and economic impacts, creating a more equitable transportation system, and improving connectivity for all modes of travel, and then to list the projects to potentially utilize available funding. The draft MTP 2050 is available for public review and comment through April 7, and it is available on our website at www.wampo.org/mtp2050. There are also some QR code cards floating around, and I have more as well. And then, in addition, we also want to share the draft plans. We will be hosting a virtual public meeting this Wednesday, March 12, from 12 to 1 p.m. via Zoom, as well as an open house on Wednesday, March 26, from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m., and that will be held at the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. And all this information is on our website as well. And we really do encourage both the council, staff, and just the general public to please take a look at the plan, provide comments, and to attend the events. MTP 2050 guides the development and the improvement of the transportation network for the next 25 years. So the all feedback that we can get is crucial to make sure that the plan aligns with the goals of the community. And if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer, try to answer, have Nick answer.
Councilor, any questions? So, we have a great organization. That's how we're getting the Meridian, how it's going to be widened fiscal year '27, or it's approved for fiscal year '27. So widened the three lanes, that's how we got the sidewalk along North Main or the 63rd, over the ball fields. So, you know, we get, we get a percentage. Our city pays a small percentage for great benefits to our city. So, appreciate it of WAMPO.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, that's all the 12 people that have signed up. Are there anybody else, or is there anybody else that would like to speak? You'd like to come on up and please state your name and your address, please.
Okay. I'm Betsy Curless, and I live at 2026 West 79th Street South in Hayesville. I live on the Curless Farm. It's on 79th Street South, and it adjoins the planned Lakefield Edition on the east side. The Lakefield Edition, as you probably remember, has 59 homes, very small homes on 14 acres, and it adjoins the Southampton Edition on the north. We've been talking to some Southampton residents, as well as other neighbors that are around, and some of them are concerned that the smaller homes are going to affect property values and increase traffic. And Lakefield Edition and Southampton are connected by Shira, a road that's just going to go right through them and connect them, so it's going to be like all one neighborhood. And that's concerning to the Southampton residents. And the other thing, so you can probably tell by what I've said so far that we're not really in favor of all those houses, and I know it passed already back in August and even had a second vote for the infrastructure just last month. But we're slow to get together, and we just wanted you to know how we feel about it and how it impacts us. I have some friends that you guys all know, Kelly and Pam Kennedy, running the neighborhood, seems to know. They're looking for a place to build a nice house in Hayesville, a bigger house than would be in the Lakefield property. And they can't find anything. The ones on South Seneca, on the S curve, we always call it the S curve, what's it called, Timber Lakes, there's a few lots left, but they're kind of the undesirable ones that are left. And they would like to build in the Lakefield area, but they're afraid that if they build the kind of house that they want to have, that it'll be devalued because of the very small houses that are going to be the 49 houses, 59 houses on the 14 acres. We were talking to a Southampton resident yesterday, and he said he thinks if there's bigger houses in the Lakefield area, that it can generate, generate as much tax revenue as many small houses. He wanted me to say that. I gave you a map. Everybody has a map on that kind of cardboard, or that thicker paper, and it's really fancy. I drew it today, and it talks about the single-family units, lots that are available. There's 131 in the Wheatland Village Edition, that's the one on the south.
That's your mark and roll, I think.
Sorry. That's the one on South Meridian that's on the west side, south of the Christian church. And just as recently as February the 6th this year, the Cedric County Commission Board met, and there's going to be 444 lots just north of 63rd Street North in Meridian, where those big power lines go through that property. And they're zoned, single-family, SF5, and two-family residential, TF3. And I don't know how many of each, but let's say that they only did half of them. I put a little key on your map. Like, if they did half of them, single-family units, you would have 222 more single-family units, and we have 131 from the Wheatland Edition. That'd be 353 single-family units. So my question is, do we really need 59 small houses at 79th and Meridian? I suggest that, oh, there's one more thing. There's a second attachment behind your map that says that the zoning committee, it's part of the code of the city of Hayesville, that they are there to protect the value of your property. And I think that we need to consider that as we consider building those small. Oh, one minute, one minute. Okay. So my last point is that I suggest that the Hayesville City Council reconsider packing so many small houses in the Lakefield Edition and platte an additional, and platte a different thing for 79th and Meridian with larger homes that would be of equal value of Southampton and Country Lakes homes that adjoin it, so that we would have more of a balanced housing equity here in Hayesville, so that people would have a place to build nice homes, and it would have a continuity right there from Southampton into those homes. I'm asking you to vote no to the upcoming bond vote for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak tonight? Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Steve Howerton. I live at 8019 South Meridian. I'm just catty-cornered from what Mrs. Curless was talking about. And I have multiple subjects, but one of them is what she was talking about, is the property values. Recently, I had my house appraised and was getting ready to put it on the market, and I explained to them what was going across the street. They told me that my house would go on the market, starting value of $500,000. They told me if that housing development is approved and goes in, I'm looking to lose $100,000 to $150,000 off of my house value, selling value. In the city statements or codes, somewhere it says you do not want to affect property values. You are affecting property values with this low-income housing that is being put there. From all my experience, and I've been around doing business in Wichita and around, low-income housing does not draw the quality of people that I believe Hayesville would like to have. We want people that are going to maintain their property. We don't want renting companies, rental businesses, to come in and grab these houses up and then sell them or rent them because it's what you will wind up having, is you'll wind up creating a slow progress to a slump because they don't keep their properties up. They fix them, they let them go, they rent them to the next one. You don't want that in Hayesville. You don't want the legal problems that you have with low-income housing. We're not looking for that. Recently, we got an RV and boat storage stopped just south of me on Meridian for the simple reason is of the criminal activity that things like that draw. And the police know, in low-income areas, they have more crime than they do in regular areas. And we don't want that in this area. Hayesville needs to look to be an area that will draw people in with good quality housing. 700-square-foot housing, or whatever these are going to be, is not high-quality housing. They had the same project considered a couple of three years ago with the, a place down south of Hayesville, again, wanting to put in many homes. Again, you're drawing the wrong kind of people into those areas. So we're not looking to do that. With the drainage problem, another issue down there, those ditches cannot handle any more drainage. I know you're going to put in a retention pond. A few years ago, the county had to stop Hayesville from pumping water onto the county, which was coming to me, and it was flooding my property out on that corner. They stopped it, and you folks put a pipe under the road and started pumping it to the other side, which is still the county, by the way. And the ditches won't handle it. I talked to the people down there about it, and they say that we can't get the proper grade to carry any more volume of water if we have heavy roads. It just will not handle it. And you're going to wind up with a flooding issue down there if you start dumping the drainage of all that asphalt, concrete into that ditch. I've heard the stories about the Meridian Avenue project. They want to keep Meridian attractive. They want to grow it up. They want to bring it up to a nice quality area. They don't want it looking like Broadway. And in my opinion, low-income housing is not the way to go to attract business, to attract new people to the area. They drive down there and they see a bunch of houses packed right next door to one another. That's not really a attraction that most people want to see. So I would like to see things change. I would hope that you would do, as Mrs. Curless requested, rezone that property. I don't have a problem with homes going on, but put in quality homes. You'll get more money off the tax revenue with those homes, and you won't be looking at landlord's coming in, they're slumlord's basically, and buying up these houses as they become available, and then turn around, rent them out, and ignore them. You've got the same thing happening all over Hayesville. You could look at Oaklawn. Oaklawn turned into a rental city. And we don't want that in Hayesville. We've got enough bad areas now. We don't need to add to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, the members of the public would like to speak? All right, if not, we will move on to item two, approval of license and bonds. We have them tonight. Item three, A, resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, Series A, 2025, of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Do we have Brett Shogren from Stockholm?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council. Brett Shogren with Stiefel Nicholas and Company in Wichita, financial advisor of the city. At your last meeting, you adopted various resolutions authorizing infrastructure projects related to Lakefield Edition housing development. The project's consisting of paving, sanitary sewer, stormwater drainage, water distribution, and sidewalk improvements to Meridian and 79th Street totaling $2,472,000. To fund these improvements, we're asking the city to sell and issue general obligation temporary notes, which will eventually be converted into general obligation bonds when the projects are completed. Estimated size of the temporary notes is 2,700,000, which is sufficient to pay for the petition projects, capitalize interest to make the interest payments, and cost of issuance or closing costs. All costs of the project are to be assessed at 100% to the improvement district and 0% to be paid for by the city at large. Once completed, the total cost of the project, including financing costs, will be spread over the 59 lots and the development via specials. Property owners will have the opportunity to prepay any or all the specials. Any specials that are not prepaid will be paid via specials taxes over 20-year period with interest. The resolution tonight for consideration is the note sale resolution, authorizing us to move forward with the sale of the notes. We'll develop the preliminary official statement, submit the package to Moody's for an underlying credit rating, circulate to potential bidders, and take bids on the notes on Monday, April 14. We'll come to your meeting that evening, explain the results of the sale, and have you consider accepting the best bid and adopting the note issuance resolution, which finalizes the sale. Assuming everything goes to plan, the temporary notes are scheduled to close on May 1, which is when you'd have money to start constructing your projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the process.
Any questions for Brett? Does anyone know the, you know, this development was annexed last year, it was, or maybe last year. Anyway, I know it was plotted last year. The infrastructure was approved at the council meeting last month, so this is just how we're going to pay for it. So, any questions? Councilor Walters?
Yes, I know this is continuing on the same line of what's just been said earlier. It's not a reflection on you, per se. I know that we, as a council, agreed on this last year, and most agreed on it last month also. This simply continues to drive forward the plan to put the smaller houses in that which I've been opposed to. Therefore, I think to continue to drive that, if I oppose this sale of bonds, it might slow that down because I would like to see us reconsider what we're doing with that space. And some of the things we've been hearing, and also we've been receiving, even as of today, more emails and communication about this particular area. It's raising a lot of concern in the neighborhood. You've heard that. So I'm going to have to vote no on this. I just wanted to put that forth.
Good. Councilor, go.
I wasn't at the last meeting. I will tell you this. One thing that I just heard that really upset me is talking about low-income housing because that's not what these is. This is smaller homes for smaller people, maybe people that are just starting out, their brand-new homes. For that matter, I don't care if we have people who need help with housing. I want Hayesville to be a welcome place for everybody, not just somebody that can afford $100,000, $200,000, or $300,000 home. Every single time, we've had developments in here over the past years with Hampton Estates, Country Lakes, Timber Lane North, Timber Creek. All these are for expensive homes. When is the last time we've had somebody come in here for people to get a smaller, affordable home to start off with? I've been here for more than 20 years, over the past 25 years, and I can't think of any. That's what this is. We need to help people get a start. And to me, that's all this is, is you're helping people get a start with a, with a smaller house because they can't afford something nicer. And I think when you look at most plans, a lot of times on a busy street and a busy corner, you have smaller houses, or you have duplexes or something else that buffers into the nicer houses. That's what this is. This is a neighborhood into a neighborhood. The houses might not be as big, but they're going to be new. I think they're going to be taken care of, and I think it's something that Hayesville needs to have their arms open to serve anybody, not just people that can afford new houses. That's just my thought on it because I wasn't at the last meeting either.
I do know a lot of people have been, have asked for smaller homes, such as, you know, retirement people, they want to downsize to a smaller home, you know, patio home, or just a smaller home. The developer is, it used to be Paul Kelsey, but now it is, Klosmeyer is the developer. And he built Country Lakes, all the homes in Country Lakes, you know, they're Klosmeyer homes. I live in a Klosmeyer home, which I think it's, I think it's a great neighborhood, great homes. As far as the lot sizes, I know, looked at the map, a lot of lot sizes around, you know, 6,500, 7, or 6,500, 7,000. Looked at some of the other lot sizes around Hayesville. I know there's council members, lot size on their home is... I know there's councilmembers, lot size on their home is about the same size, sixty-five hundred. I don't know how big the house is. But it's, you know, it's just a smaller lot. I would not classify it as a low-income house. Councilman Walters?
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, something did occur to me, if they, if they are to be patio homes, which I don't know for sure yet or not, if they don't have basements, I would like to see the city have something like with apartments or anything that would come in like that, that wouldn't have basements or something, that they have to have shelters there for the people. I would like to see the city work that in somewhere to where if something like this comes up again, and it would be a development that didn't include a shelter, that we make that a requirement.
No, what time they, they did say patio homes, but then another time after that, they said not, made, not all of them will be patio homes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Walters?
Yes, I appreciate the sentiment of my colleague over there. If you look at the map that Mrs. Curless presented, there are hundreds already on the chart that could be used for the purpose that you're asking, that you're suggesting to make that particular area the tiny homes or the patio homes. I'm hearing from my constituents, if you will, that there's a lot, there's quite a bit of opposition there, so I just put that forth.
Any other questions or comments? If not, what would the council like to do? Councilman Crum?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series A, to twenty twenty-five, of the city of Hayesville, Kansas, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series A, twenty twenty-five, of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Any further discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
No.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
No.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, this does approve, this is approved, so thank you, thank you for coming out.
Yes, thank you. We'll report back next month with the results. Thank you.
Next, we have item four, notices and communications, A, governing body announcements. Councilman Crum?
At the library tomorrow at four P.M., we'll be having the Healthy Heart Series going over nutrition. And then on the thirteenth, which of course is the Thursday, the Parents' Teacher Storytime at ten thirty, they do that every Thursday morning at ten thirty. Pie Day is March fourteenth, the library will be selling pies on that day. The eighteenth is another Healthy Heart Series, and that one's on diabetes. The next Lego Club meeting's at four o'clock on the nineteenth. Then on the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth, another Healthy Heart Series is the Heart Healthy Bingo. Then on the twenty-seventh, of course, you've got the Parents' Teacher Storytime again, you also have the Friends of the Library Board Meeting, and then the Board Meeting at seven. And quilters meet in the community room on Mondays and Thursdays, and knitting and crochet group meets on Tuesday afternoon. That's everything going on at the lab.
All right, thank you. Any other councilmembers have any announcements? I have some for the senior center. Line dancing is every Wednesday at three P.M. The favorite dip contest will be March eleventh at twelve P.M. The Lab Cab mobile presentation, March twelfth at ten A.M. The hustle lunch outing is on March eighteenth. March dinner is on, uh, March twenty-first, I believe it's fried chicken. Nelson, should be good. Nelson Elementary Singers, March twenty-eighth at ten A.M. The Kansas Legal Services, March thirty-first at one P.M. Some recurring events, dogs and coffee, dominoes, cards, writing crafts, bingo, bongo, cheer yoga, WSHU well reps, Alheimers Support Group, Crafting Club, Mexican Train, and poker. So, the Hayesville Hustle numbers, February, so last month, number of rides was two hundred twenty-two, and new registered riders, three. So, I was there this morning, had a dog and coffee with the mayor, so we had a good turnout. So afterwards, had a cheer yoga, and it was packed, I mean, it was full of cheer yoga, people doing cheer yoga. So, it's, uh, it's great to see all the, all the people over there, you know, taking advantage of different events going on.
I didn't see you join in on it.
Uh, I had a meeting right after, right after. One meeting, one meeting. It was good, it's, uh, we had a great turnout, a lot of good conversation. So, I know Councilman Brewster was over there, so, anyway, we had a good time. Yeah, last week, well, last month, you know, I told you about the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, I took the, well, I took the youth up to Topeka, saw the governor and our representatives and our senator and tour and all that. So, last week, took the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council to the Central County. So, we talked to our county commissioner, and also met the other county commissioners. We sat in on their meeting. They were able to introduce themselves and had a picture opportunity with all the, with all the members, and afterward, afterwards, we took a tour through the, through a museum. So, they liked that, they had much, so. Anyway, another good, good time. So, just something to put on your calendar, I'll mention it next month as well, but doing the annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, be on a national day of prayer. This year is on May first. We're having that at seven A.M. at the, at the hack. So, we get ten dollars a piece. But I'll put it out, I will put it out again next month, so, but if you just go and put it on your calendar, if you'd like to attend. Thank you, Chris. Councilman Crum?
I did have one more thing I forgot to mention, even though you reminded me earlier. Swim to a Wish just got done. However, the website's still open. You can wish.org/mocan/swim. Our goal this year was twenty-five thousand, we're a little bit short of that, we're at about twenty-one thousand five hundred right now. We had three teams, well, two and a half teams. We had a team, Derby had a team, and the Derby had a couple of boys that swam with some kids from Wichita North. Each one of those teams swam a hundred miles each, so each boy swam twenty miles. It took us about, I think we finished up in about forty-five hours this year, and we had a pretty good turnout with people coming and swimming support miles, and we had some great wish ambassadors that came and enjoyed. Actually, this year was kinda cool, we always have a wish ambassador start the race with a bell with each relay, and actually, both kids that were there to start relays ended up getting in the water and doing a little bit of stuff. One of them even swam a little bit, so that was kinda cool. But just an opportunity that our city's done a great job of helping us with this. This is our thirteenth year, in twelve years, we have donated over three hundred and ten thousand dollars to Make-A-Wish. When we started doing this, a wish was about five thousand dollars to grant, and now it's about ten thousand dollars to grant. So, last year, we did thirty-five thousand, we actually granted three and a half wishes last year. This year, we're just a little over two. We'd like to get just a little bit more. Like I said, you still have an opportunity if you can get on the website and find it. You can find that website on my Facebook page, we're on the Campus Swimming Facebook page.
You said they swam twenty miles?
Each swimmer swam twenty miles, and it was five each, so it was a hundred mile relay for each team.
I remember being a Boy Scout swimming one mile with flippers on, I was exhausted after that.
They didn't, they didn't have flippers. They're getting to sleep about an hour and a half, and then you wake them up, and they get in the water, it's around the clock. So, we've got guys in the water swimming at three o'clock in the morning, and sometimes they get pretty groggy, especially running Saturday night. From Saturday night at about eleven o'clock until Sunday morning about six is definitely the hardest time. Boys really struggle during that time. But they, we always remind them that they're doing this to grant wishes for kids that struggle every day. So, I think it's been a good thing for the city, and we appreciate all the support the community's given us, 'cause they really have, and we've had as many as ten teams do this with us before. And we've had the, campus has had the most money earned every single year, and it's not even usually close. This year, we were at almost thirteen thousand, and Derby was at about a little under eight. But, yeah, just sad opportunity still out there, and appreciate the support the community gives.
That's impressive. And thanks for all your time you do, you spend with that, too. Any other announcements? If not, we will move on. Item B is the Central County Fire Department Station Thirty-four monthly report, and along with item C, emails from Cox Communications, it's in your packet. Item five, old business, we have none. Item six, other business, A, consideration of insurance renewal. I have Jeff Beagle from ICI.
Hello, everyone. Members of the council, and mayor, and city staff, thank you for having me tonight. This year, we actually did look for another proposal. Will actually called me and said he'd been hearing some talk about one of the other carriers that's interested in mining cities and municipalities here in Kansas and Missouri, it's Midwest Public Risk. So, we actually went out and got a full proposal from them, and I think you've all had in your packet kind of a comparison and contrast of that versus EMC. Really, in looking at it, there were definitely some, some big differences in certain areas. I think the biggest one that probably everybody would see, that would be in favor of Midwest Public Risk, is it has a lower wind hail deductible. Its wind hail deductible is twenty-five thousand per occurrence, which is what you have today. EMC, because your property values are now over fifty million dollars in total, they're not willing to do the, they're not willing to do the twenty-five thousand per occurrence any longer. They said it needs to go to fifty thousand per occurrence. And that's not per building, so if something happened and damaged ten buildings, it would still just be that one deductible for both those situations. So, the twenty-five thousand dollar deductible is obviously better for Midwest Public Risk, but for instance, they don't have a deductible, a dividend program like EMC does. And EMC has consistently paid out dividends for many, many years to the city. I think the last, the average over the last five years, right now, is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and four dollars per year that's been paid out to the city, usually, usually in the April or May timeframe. The other thing is they have a couple finite things on their policy that might not stand out to some, but for instance, EMC is written on a blanket property policy. It sounds very foreign to most people, but what that means is if you've listed all these buildings, and you've gone to the effort of listing all the values and how much they cost, and if, say, one of them burns down, we actually had this with another city just in the last year. Building burned down, it was listed for a little over six hundred thousand. When they went to do the estimate to rebuild it, it was gonna be over a million dollars. But because you had that blanket, you're allowed to use that money that you've paid for property insurance on some of the other buildings to be able to rebuild that. Whereas if you were with Midwest Public Risk, they say it's a hundred and fifteen percent, so you'd only be able to go fifteen percent over the value of that stated building in that case. So, there's some huge advantages potential to that with EMC. Also, there's much higher uninsured and underinsured limits on the liability for EMC, it has a million dollars. That basically means if somebody gets in an accident with, with another vehicle, with a, like a city of Hayesville vehicle or something like that, and they don't have insurance with this other Midwest Public Risk program, there would only be a hundred thousand in coverage for damages and injuries, whereas with the program with EMC, it'd be up to a million, which is an industry standard. And the final thing is with the city of Hayesville having a water treatment plant, with Midwest Public Risk, they had an absolute pollution exclusion, even in the case of an accident dealing with wastewater treatment plant, whereas EMC does have a specific carve-out for pollution coverage for the event of some sort of major accident with the wastewater treatment, water treatment plant. So, for all those reasons, and then looking at the total premium, the EMC renewal premium was still a little bit less, our recommendation to the council is that you probably continue with EMC and approve the renewal that they have offered.
Council, any questions? Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the insurance bid from EMC Financial as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the insurance bid from EMC as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we have item B, consideration of accessible playground equipment for Riggs
Good evening, Mayor and council. I believe it was back in twenty twenty-three, we had members of the community approach the park board about installing an ADA swing in Riggs Park. Park board had added that into the park plan, I believe, in twenty twenty-three, and now have the funds to move forward with that. At the February meeting, they approved up to a hundred and fifty thousand to actually install two pieces of equipment. This memo before you is to install an ADA glider swing over in Riggs Park. You will see the location of that. Park board did select the manufacturer that installed the equipment last year, so it'll be the same manufacturer for the swing that will go there. It will match in style and color and everything like that. The surfacing will be turf for that area. Discussing with the manufacturer, he said that the area around it, they have shown that turf allows kids to, more of them will sit on the ground and play, and so that's what we're kinda looking for this area, 'cause we have a extra space that we're filling in for easier for maintenance and everything. So, when you see the diagram, you'll see a little bit extra space on there. So, I am looking for approval for eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to contract with Great Southern Recreation to move forward with this. I can try to answer any questions you might have. I will have the second piece, hopefully, I don't know if that will be this year or not, but we do have plans to install a second piece of equipment over in Colmia Park, which is next to the hack. Different piece of equipment.
Because we go around, right?
Yeah, it's a spin feature that, very inclusive, allows both kids in wheelchairs or any other abilities that be able to play in that, along with other kids, so.
Councilman Crum?
Okay, so just to clarify, the eighty thousand dollars that we're working on right now is just for the glider in Riggs Park, it doesn't include the one in Colmia's?
Correct. Well, we haven't figured out the location logistics for installation over there at Colmia, so we're still working on that, but park board did go ahead and approve that when the funds become available. We'll be discussing it again, there's some things we have to get worked out with that still.
Okay. 'Cause I thought, by looking at the thing, I thought it was included.
Not yet. So, the hundred and sixty thousand, they did go ahead and approve, we did discuss one. There's still some, like I said, some details, but the, the swing glider, I call it a swing, but it's a glider, will be installed at Riggs, and then over at Colmia will be a spin feature.
Okay.
This would be a great addition for accessible playground.
Can I make a motion that we approve the bid for Great Southern Recreation for eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents for the ADA accessible glider swing in Riggs Park?
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Councilman Walters? Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And I did forget to mention, but I do wanna point out that this will be paid for the, out of the park and recreation sales tax one.
All right, thank you. Next we have item C, consideration of copier lease.
Good evening. The lease at the senior center has expired, so we are looking at for a new unit. We are currently paying a hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents a month for the lease. And we are requesting approval of the Conica Minolta, that's the same brand that's in there now, so we do trust it, we do, are happy with the service that we're receiving. Do you have any questions?
Councilperson, pardon?
Where's the lease from? Oh, is it the Conica?
It is from Conica Minolta. And it is a little, a few dollars more, but we do know it's a known cost, so if we run over, there's not gonna be any additional charges for that one.
Councilman Crum?
That's all I was gonna ask, you said it's one seventy-two now, it's gonna go up to one seventy-seven, so it's a five-dollar increase.
What would the council like to do? Councilperson, pardon?
Make a motion, we approve the lease for the copier at the senior center.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the lease at the senior center as presented. Any further discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I'm trying to type Harton.
Don't forget the last one.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, next we have item D, consideration of agreement with the Hayesville Swim Club, Rob.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, tonight, present the, uh, contract with the Hayesville Swim Club. Notable changes from last year are the swim days. Stand for any questions?
Councils have any questions for Rob? Councilman Walters?
I'm just trying to read through this. It looks like, uh, they're asking to use the pool in the morning when they're not normally having others in the community using it, or in the evening, after it closes six thirty for the most part, except for, uh, when you have, uh, events and then you close it at four, is that right, what I was saying there?
Yeah, so they, they will use, they'll, they'll use the pool for practices in the mornings, and then a couple nights in the evenings after eight o'clock. And then they, they have four meets scheduled on June tenth, the June twenty-fourth, the, and July twenty-eighth. That they get, starting at four o'clock.
Have we done this in the past, or have we used the pool at, uh, campus?
Uh, they've, they've used the, the outdoor pool for the last twenty-plus years.
Okay. Probably fifty-plus years.
Yeah.
Sometimes we start practice in April, and we'll do the, those practices up at the high school until the pool's open down here.
Seventeen practices year-round. They'll use campus when it's, there's no water in the outdoor pool. As soon as water's available, they.
They give them that cool water.
So it doesn't impede with any of the community using the pool, is what I'm really asking.
No, it, yeah, they use it outside of our swim lessons, open swim, pool parties. They use it when we don't use it.
What council like to do? Do we like to approve the agreement? Councilperson, pardon?
Make a motion to approve the agreement with the Swim Club.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the agreement with the Hayesville Swim Club. Any further discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
I'm staying. Yes.
All right, next we have item E, the consideration of pool pricing for the twenty twenty-five season.
Uh, good evening again. Before you, I have the Hayesville Pool Pricing for the twenty twenty-five season. The pool passes and the majority of the prices will stay the same from last season. Notable changes are swim lessons, which have increased by five dollars, and then the private lessons have increased by ten. One additional note, uh, for, for this year is that we will be implementing scholarship-based pricing. Uh, those are not listed on here, but based on free and reduced lunches through the Hayesville School District. Uh, if they are, if they get free lunches, they'll get, uh, fifty percent off their pool pass. Uh, if they have reduced lunches, they'll get twenty-five percent off. And that'll be paid for, subsidized out of, uh, rec sales tax.
Is that something new?
Yes, that is new for this year.
Yes, I love that. I make a motion that we approve the pool pricing for the twenty twenty-five season as presented, including the scholarship.
Second.
We have a motion on second, any discussion? Councilman Walters?
Uh, right, I just had a quick, uh, comment. I appreciate, uh, what you're doing on this, Rob, but it's a quick question. I noticed that you have, for fifty-five and up, it's a dollar fee, which is, I think, a great deal for most of us here. Anyway, have you ever considered a family pass of two for those that are fifty-five and up that might fit in that?
So we have the, the, if you're going to use it all the, if you go all the time, it's worth getting the, the, the pool pass at a hundred dollars.
If I go fifty times in a month?
That's for the whole summer.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just thought I'd ask. All right, that, that's why.
Any further discussion? Question, please?
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Good. All right, next we have item F, personnel manual revisions, this is the first reading. Uh, so if you have any questions, uh, you go ahead and ask them now, or, uh, ask them, you know, throughout the next month. So they'll come back for, uh, next month for. Councils have any questions they know of, offhand? If not, we will move on to item seven. A, administrative services, Jordy?
I don't have anything.
Item B, city clerk, Angie?
I don't have anything.
Item C, police, chief, maybe you have something?
Yeah, we can't just go with nobody saying anything, so. Good evening, mayor and council, I just wanted to introduce our visiting officer, Officer Elijah Berry out there. Um, he's currently assigned the afternoon shift and evening shift, so if you're somewhere, just say hi to him as you go by out there. Um, also, as you probably noticed, the weather is getting warmer. Last week was severe weather awareness week. So with spring coming, make sure that we're watching for people out walking more, walking their dogs out, just doing things, kids riding bikes, things like that, just be aware of those in the community, make sure we're, we're being careful when we're driving, and minding the twenty mile an hour speed limits in residential areas. And also, we have our severe weather awareness class on the twenty-seventh of March, it'll be next door in the courtroom. So invite everybody to come out there, if you want to come out and see some cool storm pictures and, and learn a little bit about the weather, since Kansas is the great place to see it. If you have any questions about that, we've got flyers out and we've got information on the website and on the city of Kansas website also. Thank you.
And chief? Next we have item D, other works, Kelly?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Um, our new backflow test reporting system is about to go live. Um, letters have been sent to every property owner that we know that has a backflow device. Um, the letter informs them that any new backflow tests must be submitted online only. It is responsibility of the property owner to make sure their backflowed device is tested yearly and then rebuilt every five years. It is the responsibility of the contractor or the tester that's hired to submit those tests to us via online. Um, we are providing some web training for any testers or contractors if they want to join us, uh, tomorrow to get a, kind of a first look run-through on the website. And then also, we also sent letters and emails to those testers and contractors, letting them know of the new changes. And currently, staff is performing a visual survey of any backflow devices that we may not know about, and then letters will be going out to those property owners in the near future. So if anyone has any questions, they can contact the public works department, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next we have item B, recreation.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Uh, pool fits booths are open for registration, they are fifty dollars per ten by ten space. Uh, you can sign up for those at the activity center or the website at hayesvillrec.com. Uh, we'll be hosting a trivia night on March twenty-ninth. You can sign up for that now. Uh, Summer Elements Registration will begin on April first at six A M. So if you're signing up, we open up the doors at five, if you don't want to be late, uh, because we fill up in two hours. And the pool sales will begin on April seventh. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have item eight, appointments, we have none tonight, but there is an opening on the park board. So, um, if anybody that would like to, to be on the park board, just, uh, point them to our, uh, city, our website, where the application can be found. Item nine, executive session, we have none scheduled. Item ten, review of expenditures, a summary of February expenditures.
How much to receive and file the February expenditures?
Second.
We have a motion on second to receive and file the February expenditures. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
All right, next we have item eleven, the consent agenda, we have several things on there, so if there is something you want to have pulled off, uh, you know, make that motion, but, uh, other than that, anybody have any questions? What would you like to do? Councilperson, pardon?
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Question, please?
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item twelve, council items, A, council concerns. Councilman, uh, councilperson, pardon?
Uh, with the severe weather last week and everything, I just want to, we do not have any public tornado shelters, correct? Or do we?
We do open the city building in the event of a tornado warning.
Okay.
We don't open it before the warning is declared, or if there's a storm that's headed directly towards Hayesville, we'll open it.
Okay.
Other than that, there's no public shelter we don't have.
Okay.
Now, public places are open, already open, you know, like the library.
Right.
Just going to say the libraries open them.
Right.
But they're not going to open it because of a tornado warning.
Because that always comes up every year.
Any other council concerns? Councilman Thompson?
Yes, question for Rob. Um, is this the weekend for soccer games? Does that start this weekend?
Yes, the games will start this weekend.
Okay, that's, thank you.[1728.61]